Uh, following any order, the rise of political...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle is absent, and Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Uh, motion to approve Jim's absence.
I approve that motion regretfully.
I'll support.
Regretfully or just regularly?
Just regularly.
Motion in the second to approve Jim's absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, he's excused. Uh, motion for tonight's consent agenda? I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle is absent, Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on, citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Prairie Beech, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Um, I would like to speak in support of the council. I don't always agree with all the council decisions, as you can attest to. But I believe they are doing the best they can and have the taxpayers and residents' interest in mind. They have the difficulty of representing views of all residents and taxpayers of the city of Lowell. They are elected part-time city officials with the duty of setting policy and directing the city manager. All of their duties are placed upon the city manager. Citizens can be passion- can be passionate about their views, but everyone deserves respect. Lowell is better. I think the council is doing exactly as they should. Many topics are discussed for many meetings before policies are set. A vote is made with the information they have, and when they find that it is a concern, they revisit the issue. Example, tonight's parking is on the agenda. I attend most coffee with council and approximately 90% of council meetings while serving on Lowell Light and Power Board, Lowell Area Recreation Authority, and the Arbor Board. I feel that more citizens should attend on a regular basis and not just when a topic hits a hot button. Here's a- and just to show the difficulty that the council has. Here's a comment that came at the coffee with council. A resident of the city of Lowell regarding the 990 North Washington property, they said, "The city should annex the property, then put up for sale. If the scout group is so passionate to add to the scout park, they should buy it and put it in a preserve." City taxpayers should not have the responsibilities of footing the bill when they have difficulties, um, keeping up with with all the other parks. I personally think the city, um, annexes and puts into a park, and if they put it in a park, there should be a parking facility with bathroom and drinking fountain. When it comes, uh, to the splash pad, I know you're talking about later, it should be a closed system or put a well in. It it is a major concern to have a splash pad that uses water that citizens of Lowell Township and the city have to restrict their usage. And with that, the last two things, lastly, uh, March 24th, which is a Friday night, they'll have the Lowell Showboat, there will be a, um, benefit for Don Dean that is going through, currently going through cancer. And also Laugh Fest is, I believe it's this, uh, the 10th, at a congregational church. And tickets can now, they were at, uh, the arts, but they can now be purchased, uh, online or at the door. So, thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Eric?
Eric Barkus, I reside at 215 and a half West Main. I would like to also thank the council for the excellent job that you do. Uh, as I've, as we've attended more meetings, and I attended my first coffee with the council this past Saturday morning, my wife and I. Um, you really, you really do a lot, and you don't get the recognition or the thanks or the pay that you deserve. Uh, so thank you, Marty and Cliff, for being at the, at the council, uh, coffee. Uh, I enjoyed it very much. And if those who haven't, uh, attended, please come to that also. I'd also like to specifically mention Marty, uh, after I voiced my concern. Um, that afternoon, Saturday afternoon, and then into Sunday, he contacted, um, the city manager. He also contacted Todd Shaw and left me a voicemail with, uh, with some, with some good action. So, thank you, and you all do excellent work, but, um, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
I'm sure that we end the meeting now.
Sue, I think.
Especially when you don't get it from me very often.
It's like Christmas in March. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Jean Hayby, and I am not a resident of Lowell, but I have, uh, a concern that Lowell is doing. They did it last year, they did it this year, and I have seven grandchildren that go to the schools here. And, uh, it, it, I'm very worried of what's going, what's happening already around the state, in other states and in other cities. But, uh, last year, you guys had a pride, uh, what is that, a Lowell Pride, um, walk or parade? And, uh, I called the city who, who approves this, and they told me that they're gonna have another one this year. And, uh, I mean, when you see that there's a drag queen story time, a drag show, a drag fashion show, you know what this puts in kids' minds? It's telling them that it's okay to be like that when it isn't. It, it isn't. Yes, they have the right to be what they want to be, but not the right to expose it to kids. And, uh, you know, it, it, these kids are very impressionable. You know, I, I listen to two really good shows on my phone. X22report.com and JeremyHarold.com, which also goes by, uh, Life for America. And, uh, they're putting out a lot of things that's going on, and if the people around here don't know it or don't see it, because you won't see it on, uh, mainstream media, news, because they won't report this stuff. But, uh, I mean, there's kids that are allowed to come into school, and, and they're a boy, and they're allowed to dress as a girl, and they allow them to go to the girls' bathroom? Or in some, there's another place they allow boys to change in girls' locker rooms? This one school, this boy, this, that was, dresses a girl, when he went into this girl's bathroom, he raped one of the girls. This is just an agenda for the transgenders, the big thing. They're pushing it. They are trying to get into the grade schools to teach their methods, teach their way of living. They're even getting books in the lot, school libraries and this, and, and the town libraries. Uh, showing graphic pictures of sex, um, the way they dress, whatever they do, and it's wrong. And I feel that, you know, because of my seven grandkids here and on the children in this town, that people need to investigate the stuff that is going on, because if you don't stop it, don't allow it, then they can't get in and hurt our kids and our society. You know, God made guys to be guys, women to be women. And, uh, I mean, you know, I, it, they're just getting out of hand, and I, I myself disapprove of them having another, uh, Pride Parade in Lowell. You know, and, and just more, uh, businesses and companies that are doing stuff for Pride. Uh, Mars Candy Company that makes Skittles. They're, they did it last year, I found out, but they're doing it again this year, where they're doing the Skittles packaging in, in artwork for Pride Month, and all the Skittles are gonna be, um, all gray. But they're promoting this stuff, and kids eat that candy. I, I just, I just want to say my part. I thank you for letting me, because I don't live in Lowell, but my grandkids go here, and I'm speaking for other kids.
Okay.
Alright?
Yeah, can you give your address for the record?
Uh, 9402 Button Road in Belling, Michigan.
Hit the phone with your last name, please.
H-A-V-E-S and Victor-E-Y.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm Ron Janaski. I live at 520 North Monroe Street, here in Lowell. A city council job is to work with the best interests of the people at heart in managing all the little things that go into the operation of a town. It is a job that most citizens take for granted, after that they don't need to worry over it, and for which the council members who generously give their time usually receive little to no thanks. Most of the time, the decisions made by the council are small, although relevant, and raise little notice in the public eye. But this is not always so. Setting aside any specific issue, how does the Lowell City Council effectively canvass public opinion? The council members should have a gut feel for the mundane versus the explosive. But what about vast gray stuff in the middle? Indications are that this is a big hole and smooth operations in Lowell. The charter coun- the council ch- the charter coun- of the council establishes the every-two-weeks council meetings, for which an agenda is publicly provided only on the Friday before the Monday evening meeting. Significantly, while these meetings are open to the public, public domain is not allowed. Evidently, there are no other official means to either publicize council business before action is taken or to hear what the public thinks, again, before action is taken. The ledger does sometimes post incomplete past. They do post, but sometimes incompletely past council members. There are the coffees with the council. The occasional face-to-face any council member might have with a citizen, and social media postings, online or print, but really nothing else. Why? Now, it is understood that relatively few citizens have any desire to become active, though unofficial, council members at large. But if Lowell continues to operate without any way for the people of Lowell to know and knowledgeably participate in upcoming issues before the council acts, the council and the town are doomed to forever lurch ahead in what some call complaint-driven management. People need to feel that they have a say in how their town runs, even if a lot of people rarely or if ever exercise that right. The way things are now in Lowell, confidence in this regard is low. The council has acted without public input on at least one explosive issue, but their tepid response to feedback has far from diffused the outcry. Public comments at open council meetings are met without comment. Phone calls made to City Hall after business hours ring on endlessly without answer or recording. Emails posted directly to town leadership are often not acknowledged, much less answered. All of this, rightly or wrongly, hints at leadership complacency at best and arrogance at worst, and thereby dangerously erodes public confidence. It doesn't need to be this way. To quote Oprah Winfrey, "Great communication begins with connection." So let's get connected.
Anybody else? Alright, moving on. Uh, full business number A, splash, and agreement.
Couple weeks back, we had, uh, this agenda item, and it was tabled. We had asked for Supervisor Jerry Hale to come talk to you and answer questions pertaining to the splash pad. So, um, that provides some information in your packet, obviously the cost-sharing agreement, um, and information about the park. But I'm gonna invite Supervisor Hale up to explain to you what, what's gonna be going on here, and any questions you might be able to answer.
Where do you want to start? You, I can answer any questions you have. You've got some material that I'm sure you've gone over. This all started, uh, about two years ago, Mike.
Yeah.
I called Mike and said that, uh, I knew that you had been talking about a splash pad, and I, why don't we try to do this together? And that started the conversation. Then, uh, we didn't have quite enough room to work, and Lowell Park and Empire Church got involved, and they deeded us enough property to make the area big enough for a splash pad. The township went ahead and applied for a passport grant for $150,000, which we received. And then, uh, I approached a gentleman that I know that has grandkids that live in the city of Lowell. And, uh, I asked him if he could match that, and he said, yes, he would, because of his grandkids here. So, that got us, uh, started. We're going to apply to the community fund for a grant of $100,000. And we should, uh, be there. We've got a, um, estimate of cost that, uh, came in at under $400,000, but I sent it back, told them, and about 20% contingency on that, just to make sure. Hopefully, we'll come in at less than that, but, uh, we'll see when we set it up to bid. I think that, and all, the question of the, uh, water supply, uh, I know that's came up. I believe that, uh, when the new pumps are installed in the pump station, that won't be an issue anymore. That's what I was told anyway.
No, go ahead. I, maybe I missed it. I, I saw the thing in the pen. How much water does that thing use in a, I mean, I know it's gonna be, you can turn it on and off, so it's not gonna be running 24/7. Any idea?
The estimated cost to run it will be about $8,000 a year?
I'm just wondering how much water it uses, just because we're rationing people's water and...
Like I said, that shouldn't be a problem when the new pumps come out.
Not so sure about that. It's a capa- I mean, one of the issues is the capacity. When we're, we're pumping 1.3 million gallons per day, that was the major reason. I mean, the pumps are an issue, obviously, but what if a plant can only pump? If the pa- if the plant's getting to the 1.2, 1.3 million dollar gallons per day, that's, that's not gonna be the pump issue, that's gonna be the, the tanks or the, the plant.
Well, yeah. Because we have to have so much in our reserves, so the fire truck can, you know, it's needed.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're at a point where we have water in the event we need it.
Right.
I think one of the biggest things, I've heard our fire chief say that a house fire, pretty much enough water for the battery catches on fire, that's a huge fire, and that takes every ounce we can find. So, uh, there is always concern that, if it goes forward and it moves forward, and I think it's a great idea, but we haven't quite hammered out the whole water usage, and I know we're working on that, right? We had plenty of discussions with it and moving, trying to move forward with it, so.
Correct.
I think that's, that's the biggest problem right now is, um, was it last year flu? Maybe, maybe not, but how do you build a splash pad that when we go into water restrictions and water rationing, um, how are, we just gonna close it every other day? See what I'm getting at? Is, how do we solve that issue of something that we're spending to get, together, a lot of money to keep up and run it and maintain and operate? And what's just, do we, I just want to be like the devil's advocate, right? So if we have an issue again, and we have to start rationing water, what is, yeah, what's your game plan as a township? Because really, it's on your property.
Well, I thought we'd figure that out together.
Our, our problem.
Not, not mine, ours, okay, good choice. Uh, we would have to, I, I think if we got in that position, we'd have to shut down the splash pad first.
Can, can we put up a level where it's located, just?
We looked at that, Cliff, and, uh, the problem, water's there, it's not there. I could probably call the local, I know I'm getting one donated. But, everything turns that red-orange color because of the iron in the water.
G and H's white fence is a good, well, it's gonna go through the machinery too, that way, too, that's fresh well.
So you, you can throw a well with some kind of a iron-removing?
I don't know.
Well, we've got one.
I'm playing in the city.
We, we also checked into recycling the water, and everybody says, no, don't do that.
So the water, I know we've talked about this, so, um, if we're using it as city water to provide water to the park, that excess water runoff thing goes back to the river, correct?
Goes into the retention.
For retention pond, and leaches it back into the ground. Okay.
And that, uh, engineers haven't determined for sure yet. It might have to be increased in size a little bit. That hasn't been determined, but, uh, I've never seen any water in it yet, period. It's sitting on the ground.
That's the detention pond that's already at the park now, right, where the pickleball is and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. You're right. I've never seen water in that either, but, do we, do you know the, the flow rate of water, um, that you're predicting on a weekly basis for that?
For what basis?
A weekly base.
A weekly basis? What I hit out is, if, if you, um, 85 gallons per minute for 60 minutes, for eight hours, is 40,800 gallons a day. That was for Gen 2.
Okay. But just to make clear, um, if water rationing goes into effect, you're good with?
That's the common sense thing to do, right? I didn't quite understand. I was told that once the pumps are in, that that would, for the time being, until further growth, would catch up to it again. You're saying that's not true?
No, I'm not aware of that. I mean, our, the big issue is that, hey, I think gaming speaks to us too. But the big issue that we have, especially the reason the la- last year we shut the, we had to go to the restriction, was the gallons per day. The pumps are an issue, don't, don't get me wrong, but it'll, you know, it'll help get water to you quicker. But the fact, the bigger issue is the fact that we're, you know, we're near capacity, and, um, that was what, I mean, we probably should have, you know, we probably, we've, last couple of years, we've been inching to that water restriction, and we, we held off, and last year, we just couldn't do that. And this year, I don't know, and I think as, as, as growth continues, as, as you know, we have, we have to, we have to address the water plant expansion, one way or another.
And that's why we're working on that.
Yep, yep.
Well, if we vote for this today, does that mean we're definitely gonna build it? No matter what the water situation is, or is this, can we just take this step and then wait and see how the water thing shakes out?
Well, there's already a passport grant, there's already a matching grant, and there's a,
And the township has already spent $10,000 to get to this point.
I would rather have it there and say, can only use it two days a week, until we do a plant expansion, which we have to do anyway, than to not have it there at Lowell.
Sure.
And, you know, the number-one thing that I hear, and I don't know about Jerry, but there's, there's not a community pool, there's stuff for the kids to do, even though there is. I,
Do we have people who want a community pool sign a waiver that if we have a splash?
It's just, Jerry's got a perfect location. It fits in perfectly with what we're trying to do, right?
The township has it, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, you're right. And he's already made, they've already made, a pretty gorgeous space over there. And when people say, "I really like your park," I don't correct them and tell them it's a township park. I tell them. When they're mad about the bridge, Bonnie, I say, "Oh, it's not our park."
I think most people think it is a city park.
I wasn't even there that day. I told Jerry not to do it, and he didn't listen. But I would rather see a splash pad there while they're already, we're already addressing the water issue and the plant expansion issue. And then to come in in two years and say, "We got this beautiful new water plant expansion that can pump water for 365 days a year," and then people say, "I thought, you guys did, two years ago, didn't you guys talk about a splash pad and get a whole bunch of money put aside for a splash pad?" Plus, I don't want to discount at all the immense amount of work that the township's already done, you know, to help us make this happen, because Jerry and I have been talking about this for two and a half, three years.
And it's, it presents a neat story that the city and the township, which hasn't always got along perfectly, have worked together to provide this for all the citizens of the greater Lowell area. And even Empire Church was quick. They've been a wonderful partner for us to, but, when I approached them and said, "Hey, we've got this problem," and, uh, they said, "Well, please, why don't we, lease you a piece of ground?" Then they talked to their attorneys, and their, I'm looking at you. And then, uh, the attorneys decided that they would just, it would be better just to deed it to us because of liability.
If I could, maybe I could add something. So, as presented, it does not address the water shortage situation. So, if you are gonna consider it tonight, and that's a cue, obviously, um, if you decide to act on it, I would suggest that you, um, approve it with an amendment, a friendly amendment, um, that addresses that situation, that says that the parties agree to turn off the water in case of a water shortage and to engage in a dispute resolution conversation to solve it, or something along those lines. I wouldn't sign off on this until, I feel like that should be a part of the agreement, if we're all truly in agreement.
It would hinge on coming to an agreement?
Right, so i- if there's a water shortage, if that determination is made, um, you just said it, the common sense thing to do would be to shut it off, if we're all in agreement. So I feel like that should be in here, so when we're all gone, that's still the agreement. And then we come together and figure out what we're gonna do about it. Something as simple as two sentences that says that would make you do it better, if you're gonna approve this tonight, just to, okay.
What's the number that the city's gonna be, I mean, it doesn't say?
I believe that most of our contributions is $25,000, correct?
Worst-case scenario, if it, if with the, with the contingencies, we, we were at, uh, $448,000, and we didn't get any more money raised, we each have to kick in like 24 grand.
So I think 24 grand is a pretty cheap investment into something for the coal community.
Right.
I think we'll get there.
Yeah.
Just have to twist a couple more arms.
So I do appreciate you, uh, saying that if it gets to that point, we'll just close it down, right? Until there's water running again. So I do appreciate that being said. I think that's a, that's a pretty good idea, so.
Can, can what you suggested be done on the fly, or do we have to come back?
Splash pad public comment.
Earl Barkus, 215 West Main Street. Just a question, maintenance and liability, um, those are costs- Just a question, maintenance and liability, those are costs that will be associated with it? I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, having a splash pad's a wonderful thing. But those are also costs that the city needs to consider? Because we're adding that to parks and rec or how, I don't know how it's being divided. But is that liability being divided between the township and the city? Is the maintenance being divided between the city?
My understanding is the liability would be on the township because it's on their property. But we are splitting the maintenance and water costs.
Okay, yeah. And yes, good, sounds like a great thing. I wish I had kids and maybe someday I'll grant it.
You can still, oh, you don't have to.
You can take Eric and put your hands.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes, sir.
Can, I'm all in favor, especially if Jessica can do a quick thing that we all agree that if there's a water shortage, it's a none. And she said it could be added right now.
It would just be a friendly amendment to approve this with an added provision? Again, with the parties agreed to turn it off in case of a water shortage and need to engage in a resolution.
Anybody else have any questions for Jerry? All right, well then, since it's our splash pad, I will make a motion that we approve the cost sharing agreement? With the water restriction clause addendum, I'll make support. All right, any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Salzweedle is absent. Councilmember Yanevich.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. Forever grateful to you for everything. Fire chief wither off. Mayor DeBoer. Annual report.
Well, the mayor asked me to keep this down to about an hour and a half. It's that time of year, you guys are my, my last hit this year for our annual report. Provide you guys all with the printed versions, versions are available on our website, the fire dot. Also like to see the version of this. We're going to start with just some highlights that we're going to touch on real quick or some highlights that this report's going to talk about. We're going to talk about call numbers, staffing, changes to the facility and some of our training activities. I'd like to start off with the governing body to explain how the fire department functions. We are a legally formed authority, providing services to all of Virgin's township, all of the city of Lowell and most of Lowell township. Each of the three municipalities have two representatives on board, one elected and one citizen advisor. Our board chair this year is Jessica Marks, our co-chair is Tim Wittenbach. Jessica's from Lowell Township, comes from Virgin's Township. Mayor DeBoer from the city, Carl Blau from the Lowell Township. Dave Wickstrom is your citizen rep from the city. And then Kate Durker is the citizen rep from Virgin's Township. Our personnel changes for the past year. The biggest one was we hired our first full-time firefighter with Brenda Aaron. She's a split role position, it's an administrative assistant slash firefighter EMT. Just depends on how busy we are with calls as to which role she fills most during the day. But she's there Monday through Friday, eight to four, along with me. We also hired forty part-time paid on-call members this year. I keep it about Kelly Natuski, Tony Ellis, which you guys may recognize Tony as he serves under your planning commission, I think it is. And Nick Martin as well. Our 2022 achievements this year, firefighter Brenda Aaron was awarded the firefighter of the year award. That is an award that's selected based off from input from the command staff, the general membership? Looking at not only call volume involvement, so on and so forth. So it's not just what she does during the day, but it's also above and beyond what she's doing during the day that led her to being selected for that. Dan Radisky was our rookie of the year. We had several life-saving awards. And we also did a special service award for our honor guard, which formed in February of last year? And has already represented us in multiple funerals throughout West Michigan and parades as well. They typically drill two to three hours a week, every week, and it is strictly volunteer. They don't make anything for the presentations, the drill, they don't get any of that. We also did a, for the first time, we did a outstanding community supporter award? And we recognized Mr. Bruce Dahl for all of his work that he's done for us. Every picture pretty much that you're going to see on here is a Bruce Dahl original. Our roster is pretty full. In 2020, when I took over as the chief, we had eighteen members on the department, we're currently sitting at thirty-three? Including myself and Brett as a two full-time. We do have some applications sitting on the desk right now. We do have one upcoming retirement, so we will look at starting to fill that spot and maybe one other moving forwards. All four of our staff have transitioned from medical first responder licensing up to EMT? And the four that haven't yet are the four of these items passed ball, they're currently in fire one and two. That transition was a hundred and fifty hour per person course to go to EMT plus the national registry test? Which if anybody's had the displeasure of taking that, it's one of the worst experiences you have to sit through. Our facility this year, we were able to, as we've expanded the staff out, like I said, we, we're running into some restrictions with lockers. We were able to secure up thirty lockers from Lowell Middle School as the building was coming down or before the building came down. Before we were made aware of that possibility, we got a quote on lockers? And the quote came in at fifteen thousand dollars. So effectively, we saved fifteen thousand dollars by repurposing lockers from the school. We had people that were for the locker at the point we were able to get lockers. So all of our staff have to have a full change of clothes in case they became exposed to a contaminant or blood or pathogen while they're on scene. We have full shower everything, so they have full change now with lockers to fit. We had our flooring redone in the front half of the building. Has been touched, this building opened in nineteen ninety-one. Our staff donated the time to rip out all of the old flooring, which saved us four thousand dollars on that project. Next level coating donated those patches that you see there. They came to us and gave us a quote for it. I asked them what it costs to pull one of these patches down. They're eight hundred dollars a patch. It was one of the front half coming in from the front doors and one from the side doors that come in as well. And they, they actually donated both of those. Wittenbach Tree Service also donated the use of their equipment and staff one day to come in and take down all of the old overgrown arbor bodies and trees? That were starting to cause damage to the building. Our staff then donated their time. And Ovi very donated the stones to put down the new agemi and stonework all in front of the building. Onto the equipment, we purchased a hose testing machine last year for twenty-seven hundred dollars. We were contracting that service out, costs us three thousand dollars a year to contract it. Now that we have three of us there during the day, we've taken that on ourselves. Hose testing, saving about three hundred bucks a year annually on that. Last year, we hose tested seventy-five hundred feet of hose with no failures. With engine one now in service, we'll have a thousand feet more, actually about two thousand feet more to test next year. We had all of our annual VOT pump tests, ladder tests, SCBA testing, all required testing was completed. And then engine one, as you guys know as well, is in service. And we did a push-in dedication to Chief Martin a couple of weeks ago. Training is, is equally important to us as, as call response. Our viewpoint is, is if we're not training for the calls that are coming in? We've got a bunch of high-priced equipment out there without adequate personnel to function it. So we, we soak a lot of time and investment into training. We were very fortunate last year. We had eleven members go through the EMT courses, I stated earlier. We got eighty-four hundred dollars in a grant from the Michigan Bureau of Fire Services that made that possible. Otherwise, we would have probably been another three to four years out before we were able to afford to send everybody through all of the same time. We're also able, through a grant, to send nine members through the instructor one course. That was a forty-four hundred dollar grant through Michigan Bureau of Fire Services as well. We partnered the last two years consecutively, we're also partnering again this, next month actually? With Cascade Township and Thornapple Township to go out to the Thornapple Live Burn Training Center. Often joked and told that we're the only public safety entity that doesn't have to actually do what they have to do in order to be certified. Law enforcement has to go through firearms training, EMS, you have to do so many hours of patient care? Under the supervision of another EMT or paramedic? And the fire service, you will not receive live fire in the fire academy. So this opportunity to be able to use these live trainings? One, the opportunity to train with neighboring agencies? And two, to be able to bring a lot of our newer folks with some of our seasoned folks through this? It's huge, especially when I go back to twenty twenty, we had eighteen people, we're at thirty-three now. So there's a lot of green amongst our ranks right now. So this is a very valuable service that we are able to do here. Probably the most, most important part of all this is call response. We saw an eight percent increase in calls last year. We ended the year at eleven hundred and twenty-six calls for service. Our fires went down by two and our fire alarms went down as well. Medicals, accidents, service calls, all went up. Calls by zone, Lowell Township was the highest number followed by the city and then Virgin's Township. However, the city was the lowest number of increase last year. The city only saw an increase of two calls. Virgin's Township saw an increase of twelve and Lowell Township saw an increase of sixty-three. You see that one percent aid in there? So that's anytime that we go to any neighboring departments or Mavis responses for mutual aid. I bring up Mavis response because we signed on with Mavis, which is the Mutuate Box Alarm System. Essentially an agreement that's nationwide that says if we have a catastrophic dam failure, as Mike brought up last week? We can call in resources from anywhere in the country. We signed on to that about seven years ago as a county and as a department. And this year was the first deployment and we were actually on it. So we went to Hemlock for the grain mill fire that they had out there. We set an engine and two personnel for a twelve-hour cycle over there. We're on standby for two other events. Personnel for Florida, which we had to be down for. And then equipment personnel for Monopoly for the paper mill fire. Calls of the years, you can see that we've had a steady increase since twenty twenty. Twenty twenty is kind of our abnormality year. We saw a decrease from nineteen to twenty and then a huge jump in twenty-one. The jump between twenty-one and twenty-two is probably more of a realistic future growth than the jump between twenty and twenty-one. In twenty, we saw a lot of people that were very reluctant to call nine-one-one or to go into the hospital. As things started lighting up, we saw the increases starting to bounce back to twenty-one. Before the question comes up, I do not know why Wednesday is our most popular day? But Wednesday is our busiest day, followed by Friday. October was our busiest month. And October actually broke a record for us, a hundred and thirty-nine calls for the month of October. And our most active hour of the day is five PM with seventy-eight calls? Where three in noon were tied at seventy-four calls. Fire prevention and community involvement, our folks are very involved in the, this is a small snippet of things that we've participated in over the last year. Fire prevention this year, we finally returned back to the classrooms, providing our pre-COVID programs. We had over fifteen hundred kids come through our fire prevention safety trailer through the month of October. We had over five hundred people attend our open house this year. We provided EMT standby services at the Kent County Youth Fair, Private River Walk and several other five K events. We attended Safety Ton of Impact, sensory showing of Paw Patrol, Meyer Safety Carnival, Fallsburg Historic Village Celebration? Virgin's United Methodist, Wacky Water Night, Riverwalk, Harvest Festival and a ton of other events. We also had a coat drive as well as Toys for Tots drive over the Christmas season. The top corner picture here is all of the coats that we've collected. There was a collection at our station, pickup was done at the station. Anything that was left over was altered into flannel as well as a winter's shelter in downtown. We also partnered with Michigan Bureau of Fire Services to be able to provide free smoke and carbon dioxide alarms to the residents of our, the Greater Lowell area. It's a no-cost service to them. We come out and do a quick little survey, we install based off of what fire spec says we should have. So one inside the bedrooms, one outside the bedrooms, one in the camp areas, common areas. There are ten-year sealed lithium ion smoke detector, has seven-year sealed lithium ion carbon dioxide detector? So they don't ever have to service them until they get that little battery charge of a ten-year or seven-year. I think I already said we provide two hundred smoke and sixty carbon oxides in the area. We also partnered with Riding for Ryan last year. Riding for Ryan was started by Andy Marsman on Cascade Fire. He's a Cascade fire fighter. He was on a bicycle ride with his son Ryan. Our truck pulled out at an intersection, didn't see Ryan, hit and killed him in front of his dad. They started this program to offer free bike flags for kids to try to increase the visibility of the kids on bikes. We were their largest distributor last year. We did a partnership with Balls Ice Cream. If you came down and got a flag, we, you know, we got free ice cream, but at the same time? We gave away over three hundred flags last year and already geared up for something here as well. First aid CPR, we increased our instructor count from two last year to six. So we have six American Heart Association instructors. We've partnered Cascade Township as their, our training center. We've revised CPR to over fifty people, CPR instruction to over fifty people last year, including city staff, scouts and school staff. This upcoming year, we're looking to do more of a larger community event. It may not be a certified event, but more of a CPR awareness type of event with one of those schools or a larger gathering area. With that, we thank the city and residents of the city for their continued support? And for allowing us to do the job that we love? And we'll answer any questions that anybody may have.
Anybody that's, have any questions?
Click and ask a question.
You said you get one, do you have? Thank you. Lisa, museum annual report.
He's getting that down, that's the third time I've heard it. I'm Lisa Plank, I'm the executive director of the Lowell Area Historical Museum. And thank you for having us here tonight. We like to come to you once a year and just kind of give you an idea of what the museum has been up to in the past year. So thank you for having me tonight. In front of you, you all have a packet that we've given you of our annual reports. And these are available at the museum if anyone else would like one. Our mission is to preserve and present the history of the Lowell area. And just some numbers to give you an idea, twenty twenty-two, we were fully back to normal. Twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were obviously anomalies with the COVID situation? But all of our programming did resume in person in twenty twenty-two. Total attendance, so that's the number of people we saw through programs, through visitors to the museum? Through outreach programs that we do in the schools, that type of thing? Anytime we physically interacted with someone during the year? We saw thirty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five people last year? Which for a museum our size is, is pretty impressive. Perhaps the more interesting number is the number of website visits that we had and online viewing. So that consists of, we do a weekly online history article? Where people can access it through email, through Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, that kind of thing? And last year, we had.